Of course, they were like Bradshaw and Charlie, and Bradshaw and Charlie is a very talented team. And you want to be part of your community. So, I'm calling them how you start jumping off the bridge with the creek. To show all my children here to something like that.
All right, I, uh, if I could have your attention, I believe it's six o'clock hour. And at this time, I'd like to call this meeting of the Gilmer County Board of Education to order. Mrs. Hurley?
Here.
Uh, Carl Armour?
Here.
Miss DeCree?
Here.
Tom Ratliff?
Here.
Okay, we're all here in account of four. And at this time, I'll ask Dr. Armour to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. In the visible, the liberty and justice for all.
At this time, uh, under the provisions of West Virginia Code sixty-nine A dash four, I would entertain a, a motion that we go into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we go into executive session. And at this time, we will, and we, the board will retreat to the conference room just across the hall.
So, uh, some of the, something is...
I tried to pull that up. Did you try to do it?
Are those computers, like, get up there and do them right now? Do we need information?
I'm sure we can, if you're lucky, for all of us.
At this time, we will resume the regular, uh, agenda of the Gilmer County Board of Education. And we will begin with item... Uh, do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second? Okay, motion approved. We will go on then with our regular, um, agenda. Uh, the first item under three, uh, Gilmer Calhoun Career Center, Dr. Carl Armour. Okay, for those, I haven't, I see some unfamiliar faces, and it's Carl Armour. And I take it I'm definitely seeing many people here tonight. We're making progress. We can get one or two more each meeting, and we're on a roll. Okay, I'm the representative at the, uh, Calhoun Gilmer, uh, Center. And what I typically do is come in and just talk about what we did at the last meeting. And by the time I get home each day, literally within an hour, I get an agenda. And it's usually a three or four page agenda. And, and most of the times, what we do is just routine type, uh, transactions. Like, uh, one for the last month, prove the minutes. We had new business. We hired a bus driver. We recommended and hired Tracy Evans to teach, uh, night courses. And we had a executive session, I can't go into details about it. It had to do with the, uh, Executive Secretary slash Accountant too. And I can say that the reason we went in there, I can't talk about personnel, but we made an error in the title. So, uh, we had to get this big, I changed one or two words and re-advertize. Okay, now, Mr. Summers talked about the Edge program. And what the Edge program has to do with, they have this little brochure down here. Couple of sentences. The kids who go, probably shouldn't call them kids, the students who go to the Career Center can take courses there to get, uh, college credit for it. So if they go on to college, a two-year degree or whatever, by working through this program, they can get college credits for their down to the career. The other thing that happened after that meeting, for some reason, the telephone calls I get at home, most of them deal with finances and student achievement. This is an example of student achievement. This sheet came from the, uh, Career Center. And each person up here has this in their, uh, packet. And I'll, I'll talk about this briefly. We have, these things I have out here front, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have about eight different programs down here. I just picked this one up, automotive science. The, everybody there has to be able to do math and read. Same thing with law, enforcement, health, building construction, welding, or law. And what this sheet has to do with is the results of the test scores in, in reading and math. And instead of citing the specific numbers, uh, we're not doing real, real well down there. When I use the word "we," uh, the people down there are from Calhoun and from Gilmer County. I don't, I haven't taken on myself to say, "Who's doing what?" Because I don't want to come in here and say, point fingers at anyone. I look at this information and I see, for an example, that, uh, information management, let's go down to computer system, but let's go down here to welcome. Sixty-nine percent met the, uh, the standard for reading. So what does that mean? How many didn't meet it? Okay, uh, math, uh, sixty-three percent met the standard. How many didn't complete it? Okay, let's get down here to, I call it, uh, Food Services, which is a, is a misnomer. Let me see if I can find it here. Okay, Restaurant Management, sixty-three, uh, met reading. How many think, uh, met the math? Now, these are people who are being trained to run a restaurant. To order everything, run the cash register, keep the books, and the whole thing. Thirty-one percent passed the math. And I could go on here, and, uh, but what am I leading up to? It's this. We have a tremendous challenge. What can we do right now, not with this new program that we're, uh, launching to improve reading? What can we do in the next year to, to help students who are going to the Career Center to do better reading and math? Now, we did get Mrs. Evansy down there and teach, uh, reading. She's doing a bang-up job. And you've heard me say, "I don't know how she does it." Because when she goes into the automotive class to teach reading, she'll go in, maybe talk about alignment, or fixing brakes, or a tune-up. And she has to learn that stuff so she can go in and work with the students teaching the reading. Okay, I don't have the answer. So, one thing we can do, if you look at the regulations of, uh, of what this board's allowed to do under constraints we operate, we can ask the superintendent what he's going to do about it. So, I don't know if we have to make a motion or what, but I can certainly make a plea to the superintendent. What can we do quickly to start helping, uh, our, our students out down at the Career Center? We can't get anyone in math. We've advertised and advertised, no one will come. Fortunately, GSC may start a mentoring program, that may help. But we're, and Tracy has helped with reading, but with math, we're really hurting. So, if anybody has any suggestions or to feed to Commissioner DeVano, or, or he and the Superintendent of Calhoun County want to get it, we need something now, now. And I got a couple of other things here, uh, about Edge. We have a, an agreement down there with the, uh, with Gilmore State College, with their Natural Resource Program down there, that, uh, they're going to work out a program so that kids taking that class now can get college credit for that. We did approve hiring, uh, my great secretary, slash accountant, uh, Level Two. Her name is Lisa Moore. And, uh, we had a member of, uh, from Gilmer County went down and helped with that selection. It was Kendra Brown, and she got the raises from the LA. So, there are good things, but more importantly, there are opportunities. Let's see what we can do back, do a better job there. Okay, thank you, Dr. Armour. Uh, RISA Seven Report. Uh, RISA continues their, uh, program of doing some in-service training for, uh, teachers in the RISA Seven area, particularly in the area of math. And I believe that it's designed primarily to bring teachers into the new generation of standards, uh, prepare teachers to, to deal with this. And I might add that this is an issue at the state level. Uh, I spoke with Chancellor Hill about this issue, uh, last week. And, uh, he and the State Board are looking at ways of developing some incentives to bring able high school students into teaching, and particularly in the areas where math and science are areas where we really need folks. This is going to take a while, but I think, Dr. Armour, what you've mentioned at the Career Center, this is, is pretty much a widespread problem in our state. And it's going to have to be attacked from some very high levels. And hopefully, uh, we can develop a teacher corps or something to attract people, uh, into teaching, help them get their education, and, uh, certainly, uh, the teachers need to be rewarded after they, uh, earn their degrees and get into classrooms. I think that this is, uh, this is really a major issue. I, uh, would also like to make you aware of RISA Seven Audit. Uh, it consists of almost three thousand five hundred pages. Uh, covers a whole variety of, uh, topics in the schools within RISA Seven. That report, uh, has not gone to the state for approval, so I'm certainly not going to go into any detail on it. Uh, however, it does measure, uh, such things as positive climate and cohesive culture, school leadership, uh, standards, focused curriculum, instruction and assessment, student support services and family, community connections, educator growth and development, uh, efficient and effective management, uh, continuous improvement. Those are some of the areas that, uh, are included in this audit. And I'm sure once it goes through the processes, that, uh, those elements that were evaluated in Gilmer County, uh, will be shared with you. I would also like to, while I'm on this, uh, particular item, uh, point out that the Leading Creek Advisory Committee for the Leading Creek Elementary School, uh, has met, uh, twice recently. Uh, one meeting was very lengthy, in which we went over those items that need to be included in statute to make that school work. Such things as seniority. If a Gilmer County teacher goes to the Leading Creek School, there's no reason why anything should be lost. In other words, everyone under the roof of that building should be treated equally and fairly. And so, there are several elements in a, a, um, bill that's being drafted by the State Board's Attorney and, uh, Mr. Chuck Heinlein, uh, who's Assistant Superintendent. We had hoped to have a copy of that bill in our hands, because we've got a building sitting over there. And we're all making some plans, but I think we all understand it isn't going to work unless we provide a management system that is workable and fair. I have talked with some folks, uh, in the House and the Senate, sort of have given them an idea of what is coming along. They understand what we need. They'd also like to see an inter-county school be successful. So hopefully, you know, we'll get some things to come along soon that will, uh, give us the tools to make that school work. You know, you, you can't have two sets of rules under one roof. It just does not work. You know it, I know it. So we're going to try to eliminate that. I think the other thing you probably have heard, uh, the Los County Board of Education approved our recommendation to them for a principal at the new school. And I think, you know, uh, we're making progress a step at a time. There are several steps yet, but it's, uh, we're moving along. And now we have a principal identified. And I, I feel sure that we're going to get the help we need to get a new bill passed that will make that school work the way we want it. But I wanted to just share that with you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. It's, uh, you know, sometimes because we're in education, we think everybody else knows exactly what we know, and that isn't the case. So, there's a, there's a big communication effort that's needed any time that you explain to the layperson why a certain provision should be in a piece of legislation to make a school work. And, and we're working at that. There's some good people there that will help us. All right, item C, return authority to Gilmer County. Any, uh, discussion on this issue? I'm not sure who suggested this, but it's an item that should be of interest to us. In August the twenty-fifth, uh, twenty-twelve, pardon me, we had a gentleman by the name of, uh, Mr. Maderan who came. And we met privately, and he's a conference room back there. And we kind of aired some of our frustrations. And they still exist. And he promised us we were going to get an exit plan very shortly. The exit plan didn't come, because what he said wasn't approved in Charleston. So we've heard that all the deficiencies have been eliminated. So my question, if we're permitted to talk about this, is, okay, if they've been deli- eliminated, why the delay in turning, uh, responsibility back to the county? What, what criteria had to be met now if all the deficiencies have been eliminated? Well, I, I'm not sure that any one of us is in a position to say. I think that, uh, someone who is representing the State Board or State Superintendent would have to be able to, to tell us that. Would you agree, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
May I add one thing, yeah? A question. When they returned this partial authority, was not an exit plan part of the agreement? That they would work with the board to coordinate exiting and, uh, I thought that was in that agreement, with the return finance.
Norma, I think there were so many things going on at that time, that it was, you know, sort of, uh, like a boiling pot, confused. And I'm not sure that everyone involved in this process agreed that we had authority returned, if, if I recall some of the, the discussion. So, what we've been doing is, is operating in, it was sort of a model. You know, it's, uh...
But I did think it was in the, in the paragraph in the minutes of the West Virginia State Board of Education,
Yeah.
that that would be the goal, correct, Mr. DeVano? That that would be the goal?
There is an exit plan. Matter of fact, a question was asked for me, and I, I downloaded it and sent it out. And I'll ask, I'll see if I can find it on the computer and send it to all of you all. But there is an exit plan, and it's kind of extensive.
Thank you.
What you have to do and stuff like this. But I did receive it and send it out, because I was asked. So I know there is an exit plan. Mr. DeVano, I'll send it to me, and I'll provide it to all your board members.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else on that item? Item D, discussion and parent notification.
Uh, the last three items there I put on the agenda. So I'm going to bring them almost as a lump, but with a couple of separate points. Discussion, apparent notification, uh, the board of ed- agenda and delegation, and open meeting law compliance. Let me say this, I feel one of, one thing that all three of these items have in common is, uh, the fact that we need improved communication. Uh, regarding the parent notification, that has been resolved by the Superintendent. It was an issue about whether or not a parent was notified timely her child would be late. And she was rather upset. That was handled, the principal was involved. But let me say this, uh, almost any time a parent has contacted me since I've been involved with the board, it has a lot to do with perceived lack of communication. They feel as though either a teacher, or a principal, or a coach, you know, someone has not communicated with them effectively about their child. Whether it be an injury, or a discipline, or the fact that they were going to be late on a school bus. So, I would suggest that, and I know that we have some very caring people who always put the child's health and welfare first beyond anything. But maybe, given that this seems to be a repetitive note, Mr. DeVano, you may, uh, think, or at least consider, uh, some type of, um, little seminar on communication to make sure that everyone's up to speed as far as, you know, the reports that should be done if a child is injured, whom should be notified, you know, and notifying the alternates or whatever, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. Because, as I tell any parent, I know very well that the people in charge of these children are, can be trusted, they care very deeply. And, you know, people do make mistakes. Or timing happens and you get nervous, or you're more worried about one thing than another. But I think reviewing those policies, uh, with staff might be a good idea. And that would be up to you. Regarding the Board of Education agenda and delegation, I've asked this before, and I'm being hit with this over and over. You know, in order to accommodate the public, in order to not have the public have to sit here from the beginning of a meeting until it's over, through executive sessions, et cetera, you know, um, I would very much like the board to vote on moving the delegation portion of our agenda to wherever is appropriate in the beginning, wherever, uh, the board president would find it appropriate in the beginning. You know, we extend that courtesy to our teachers, we try to, our principals, you know. And it should be a courtesy extended to the public, that they can bring their thoughts or concerns, realize the board has heard them, and whether or not we can answer them. At least at that point, we could give them the courtesy of either, we'll refer to the Superintendent for further information, uh, you know, someone will get back with you. Or even in agreement or disagreement, you know, whatever that may happen. Or it may need to be placed on the agenda for future consideration. But I really feel that that would benefit our public, you know, that they know that they could come in, say what they have to say, the board hears it, and if they choose to say, they know they're welcome. And if they have a family to get home to or whatever, they can take their children and go home. And, you know, people want to know that the board cares about them. And I think that would be a very good communication to the public.
I agree with you, good point. And I can tell you right now, when I asked about this earlier, several months ago, the State Board said that they approve our agenda, and that's where they want the delegations.
State Board will not permit. So all board members are aware then, that we can't take a vote on this. It would be only a vote of support if we did. Okay, so the public needs to be aware.
And I'll ask again, if they'll let us move it.
Would you please? Because it really, I mean, it's just inconvenient, and, I mean, they, they promote in every single session, communication with the public. You know, to the teachers, to the principals, to the board, you know, communicate with your public. And, uh, this doesn't show very much respect for our public. And I'd love to hear their explanation of why they find that necessary. The last item I asked for him was the open meeting law compliance. I really feel it's very important to read these open meeting laws. It is a policy of the West Virginia Board of Education, Policy twelve forty-one, that these laws will be, uh, these meetings will be provided in a timely manner or a reasonable time to the media. So that the public can be aware when their board meetings. And, you know, come if they wish. Uh, I saw it was, happened to be on the internet this time. I think that's great, and I hope that continues. It's very important that the public, you know, that we, knows that we find these laws important. These meeting rules are very important. Uh, open meeting laws have to be followed in order for us to get federal funding. It's a federal fact. You know, that any agency who receives federal funding must appear to own a meeting loss. So...
Well, you brought this up before I did check with the newspaper, and they are printing them.
But that's great, I'm glad.
They have, they have been printed.
But when are they printing it? Wasn't it, was it in this past week?
They said they have a, they have all of our agenda, and they're putting it in when we have our meetings. Now, I know you all asked just for the last board meeting.
They did, this board meeting is on prior to it.
Right.
And that's the problem, I'm not sure how you could get it to the newspaper, because they have a Monday requirement. It doesn't come out till Wednesday or Thursday.
We have a list of, we gave them a list of them on our board meetings there.
You, of the public board meetings.
And you asked one every time.
But the agendas are what need to be posted.
And I checked.
Right, and that's great, but the agendas need to be posted. It is a requirement. So I would like to see us continue on that line. I hope, Mr. DeVano, that you will continue to see that that's in the press packets. And, you know, it is a public service. We're not charged for that agenda going on the internet. So, you know, that way, if the public has an issue, or they want to come and, and listen to us speak or ask questions, you know, if we could do that and get this, uh, delegation in the beginning of the meeting, I think we'd go a long way towards opening up communication. Yeah, I'd really like to see that happen. I hope the board will support it. Thank you.
Mr. DeVano, I likewise would, would echo her appeal to the State Board to move the delegations. I'm an individual board member and realize that is me speaking for myself. But in light of the fact that the State Board of Education does have their delegations placed at the beginning of the meetings, I do not understand denial at, at this local level.
Does the board want to go and, don't take a vote or anything, but just out of voice thing, for me to go ahead and say our board would like to move it, the delegations, yes, they'll let us? Is that the consensus of the board?
Carl? Misty is right. If you look at the way other state agencies do business, I think darn near without exception, the delegations are up front. Now, whether that is right, whether it's wrong, but that's the precedent that's been set. So, I think it's something that ought to be discussed. And I think if we're not allowed to, uh, follow suit, it's just like the finances we've asked information about, and the State Board won't give it to us, they ought to tell us why they won't permit us to, uh, have delegations up front. That's just my opinion, I'm speaking for the board. But, you know, I look out here today, and, and I'd like for these people to introduce themselves. Because each time I come up here and I see all the cars out front, I think, my goodness, I hope we're getting people to come to more things. Then I come in here and maybe see one or two people, and I see new people today. I assume most of them are teachers. If we can do anything to get more people to come, I'll do anything in my power, if it even allows having a vote. Okay, Tom?
I, I think it's in the third of the night. It, it could work in reverse also, because there may be some people that want to sign up on delegation, but can't be here till later, you know, in the meeting, and stay in, been right here at the first of the meeting. So, that could work either way, I think.
But don't you have to be here fifteen minutes before the meeting to sign up delegation you're respective?
Yeah.
So it doesn't really matter where it's positioned, the time requirement to sign up stays the same.
So it, it may not matter.
Well, I, you know, I think it, it can work wherever it's placed on the agenda. Norma, I sort of disagree with placing it at the beginning is going to increase our crowd. I don't think that's necessarily why people are not coming.
Oh, I, I agree with Dr. Simmons, it may not be. But it does give parents an opportunity, who may have children at home and want to say something, to come in and not have to stay the entire meeting in order to get what they need said and go home. Or people who have worked all day. It's just an effort to increase communication with our public, our constituents.
Well, I, I don't have any problem, uh, Mr. Superintendent, with asking that we have permission to place it at the beginning.
Did I, did I hear Dr. Armour going to buy dinner for anybody that shows up for delegation?
Make part of it. My dinner, I'll buy, I'll bring doughnuts.
I knew you'd hear it, I said hello enough, didn't think you'd hear me.
All right, well, let's see, we've got, uh, we've got an agenda ahead of us yet. Consent, agenda, new business. Item A, minutes of the December fifteenth, uh, twenty-fourteen meeting. And you have a copy of those minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Discussion. I just make one statement, and that is, uh, we have an item in here. At this time, the state has not responded to Carl Armour's request for financial information. And that request was made on the eighteenth of November. And it's in the main... was made on the eighteenth of November, and it's in the meeting minutes, so I'm sorry.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, let's look at the rest of the items as a group, and we will entertain a discussion on any of those that you would like. Do I hear a motion for approval on B, C, D, E, F, and G?
I make the motion.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, now, discussion on any of those items.
I wanted to ask, do you know, Mr. DiVano, off the top of your head, why were travelers' insurance, what that represents exactly?
I'll check, but if I was the top, I'd say it was probably our buses and transportation and stuff like that.
It's a quarterly thing, approximately.
You wonder about travelers' insurance?
Yeah.
Other questions?
And I do have one other, just comment, it isn't a question. I note that according to tax calculations, we've received well over half of the annual. Now, I have read and noted in the paper that it's been reported from the commission that they had a very good year of tax income this year. I'm just hoping that, you know, we've received well over half, we've received a million three, the budget's a million nine, and I'm rounding those numbers, leaving a balance to receive for the last five and a half months of five hundred ninety-one thousand, and that's just your general tax revenues, the general accounting fund. So I'm hoping that we're watching our budget very closely, because I'm seeing a lot of, in these budget transfers and things, I'm seeing a lot of excess levy money moved to fund professional staff. And that may just well be a budgetary technique, I don't know, I haven't had an opportunity to discuss it with the treasurer, but it does concern me that we're needing professional money, some excess levy, so very quickly, and I questioned this once before.
It's, it's there for staff development in the levy, and as I told you before, the reserve fund that I have, I don't want to touch that, we're going to try to use all of our grant money.
But I understood you wanted to save that four hundred twenty-five on aside fund analysis.
Right, and that's what we're trying to do, to make sure we spend the levy money in the grants that we have and stuff like that, so that saves that money for us.
Because I am concerned about that five hundred thirty-one thousand, I mean, I hope this means that we're going to get more than they're projected, and that can happen.
It could happen, depending on what the, the rates are, and what kind of revenue we get.
Especially if they have a lot of public utility taxes, or, you know, various, a lot of money, who knows? But it's something you really need to be aware of, because if that's what we get, and sometimes we fall short, and that could be a potential problem.
Okay, any other questions? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, proposal A, all right. Okay, item five, motion for superintendent to approve field trips.
This was brought up at the last meeting, to put this on the agenda, because we do have field trips sometime that have to be approved after, or taken before you all can approve them, and some of them were due with, with our students, and I didn't want, and again, I took the liberty of approving that one, because it dealt with our kids going to the science fair, and you all suggested that you put it on here. If you approve this, and want me to approve the field trips, I want to make sure in the motion, any field trips that go outside the county, or outside the state, you all need to approve these, not, not just me.
Yes, sir.
You have a policy, it would be appropriate to read that to us now, what the policy is?
The policy, it's very vague right now, that it's more or less what you guys are going to create on the policy, so if you guys approve this, then it'll become part of the administrative package of the policy that we have, and I don't think that will happen.
So we, we have vague policy?
Okay. It's what the state developed, and it's, you have to do the, you have to make the administrative things, and this would be part of the administration.
I would like to make the motion that the superintendent be permitted to approve in-county field trips as necessary until the next week.
We really don't have very many in-county field trips.
Well, you know, didn't I just hear you say that you wanted the out-of-state, out-of-county field trips?
No, I'm sorry, I corrected that, out-of-state.
Out-of-state.
Anything that's out-of-state, I want you as a board member to approve.
How is our insurance handling, you want to approve everything except out-of-state?
Yeah.
You want that on a monthly approval basis, or?
Well, I, you can make it either way, you can make it to where, if it comes up, and I deem it's an emergency, then I can approve it, so when it comes to you all, it might be already been taken. But the thing of it is with the field trips, you're going to have to let them know one way or the other, because sometimes something goes up, and if it's you guys approving them, then it's something that I'll have to deny.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Do I hear a motion to approve under the conditions that Mr. DiVano has explained?
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Could we restate that motion?
Let me put, what I like to do is prove the trips that are in-state, anything outside the state, you all approve, but I want still put the trips, you still get the trips on the agenda, so you know what we approve, where people are going, for your information.
So you approve all trips, except for out-of-state?
Yeah, that's, that's yours.
But this would be only under intervention, or are we looking at, in perpetuity, making a, a policy of that?
This will become part of your policy as administrative thing when we add to it. Now, intervention's only on a couple things, this is a policy you're going to create right now.
We're going to have three readings of this policy.
Pardon me?
We're going to have three readings of this policy presented to the board.
You already approved the policy, all you're doing is put some administrative guidelines to that policy.
Well, we have the motion, do we have a second, so we can discuss this?
Just a second.
Somebody seconded it, Laura.
You seconded it?
Somebody did.
Okay, all right.
For clarification purposes, and my understanding was from the last meeting, and maybe I misinterpreted it, I thought that the board would continue to get field trips, but in the case that the board was not going to meet prior to a field trip being approved, then we would give you the authority to act on our behalf until such time that the board can meet, and then those individual trips would be approved through you until they were brought to us. That way, board members would not feel as if they were having to vote against the kids because something was pre-approved. And that's my understanding of what we were going to do, and, and I may have misinterpreted that, I thought that the board would continue to receive field trips as we have been, if it's just be in an emergency situation where you were going to be faced with denying a trip, and, and, and the board, that, that's, that's what I interpreted it as.
It's any, it's any way you, as a board, but the board wants, that's fine, I mean, you can make an amendment to anything, but it's just, it's just what's your policy that you're making right now.
May I say something? Could you make an amendment to the motion to cover the sentence to exactly what you said? Would you be interested in that?
I, I would, I would amend the motion to say that we would give Mr. DiVano the authority to act on behalf of the board to approve field trips that fell between board meetings, where it would be a case of the students being denied the trip if he didn't do so accordingly. And then, I would encourage that the field strips, trips still be brought to the board in a timely manner. This is not, and I know it's getting lengthy, this is not, all have to be in the motion, but this is not to discourage those, those administrators from being prompt with their submissions.
Correct.
We want that to continue, because that's really greatly improved since, you know, you know, we've brought this issue up of liability and insurance and reasons, they've done, I just don't want it to become a loophole to where we fall backwards. But I just think it would, it would be good to give Mr. DiVano the authority to approve those, those field trips that fell between regular meetings.
Only in emergencies, type of situations?
Yeah, if, if the board is not going to meet, and it's going to mean a kid not getting to go on a field trip, or to a science ball or something, I think the board should give you the authority to act on our behalf.
I'd second that.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the amendment?
Ten minutes.
And second?
Call of second.
All those in favor of Misty's amendment to this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, anything else on the motion and the amendment? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go to his neck. Item six, superintendents, information, action, and Gabe, there's one point there under academic improvement, if you wouldn't mind letting Tom say a word or two about the reading program that he attended, but we'll, we'll let you go ahead.
Let me just give you a little handout, that, that's the front, we just received that the other day, that's the front of the facilities that our new schools are going to look like, just a part of it. It's been passed to, it's been passed to, go down to, to school building authorities now, and that once it's done there, it'll go over to, back to the architects, and then from the architects, it'll come back for bids and stuff like that, that everything should be done, completed for bids sometime to the end of March or April. The B thing, academic improvement, is something similar to what Dr. Simmons was talking about, we happen to narrow it down just to our pages, and this is just a report on ours, there's a, a chart that a friend of mine did for his county, he's going to send it to me, that breaks it down into three sections, and you're going to see, and it's nice to see that the teachers are here, what an excellent report this county's received on this OPA, we have no non-compliances, and it's due to, to the staff here, the teachers, the principals, and the students in, in our system. It's a great report, and they deserve all the credit for, for what they did in this report.
Mr. Commissioner DiVano, is, is permissible to make a comment about that report, since you brought it up? I've read that report, there are thirty-five hundred pages in the entire report, and on page three fifteen and three sixteen is where you can read about humor. And Dr. Simmons talked about what was acceptable to present there, and he's right, we weren't supposed to talk about some of it, but Mr. DiVano brought it up, I guess we can. The one item that should be addressed is item seven, and one of our schools got a two rating because they were not doing very well when it comes to monitoring, determine how well we're doing with achievement. So I just wanted to bring this up, and maybe Mrs. Many, or whomever is responsible for getting a monitoring program together, to see what we need to do to get that score up, because if we don't know what we're doing, we don't know what we need to do to do better. I think if you look at that number seven, clearly we're the right column, or is it two in the column?
May I make a comment on this? I review that report, and we indeed have every reason to be very proud. I mean, our schools are great, and Troy is up there looking as hard as it can, and I know everyone else is too. There's no one in Gilmore County that he is ashamed of. But I will say this, I spoke to Mr. DiVano about it, our example of a school, Norman Town, and you all know I have an affiliation with that, and most people do, you know, I've got a sincere, not poorly, it's my neighborhood, received a distinguished certification for teacher leadership, a distinguished certification or assessment by this OPA board for student leadership, but yet put the principal at a compliment. I know there are many things that went into this, but the board, the state board did approve this report on the January fourteenth agenda. And I phoned Mr. DiVano and asked him, I felt, and I still feel, that the OPA director should be questioned about this, because I just really cannot see how you could have a distinguished performing school with distinguished teachers, leadership, distinguished student leadership, and not have a distinguished principal. And this principal has gone way far above and beyond anything, and all of our principal principals do, I know that, I'm not just saying she's the greatest, but we've got some great people. But she's always there to make sure the children are excited about education, and she's done a great job of that, Steve. And I really wish that the superintendent would consult with the OPA on that matter, to see if it could possibly be amended. Also, a statement made in there that really bothered me, and I told Mr. DiVano this, and I'm paraphrasing, was when it was pointed out that Norman Town had no fifth grade teacher, which we also know Troy and Santor, they don't have him either, okay? So we're all, pretty much, there's three out of four schools really suffering with that. A comment was made by the OPA team, and I'm paraphrasing, that this was not necessarily a detriment, if you will, to Norman Town, because it helped prepare the students for middle school. I would really like to have a detailed explanation from the OPA committee as to the meaning of that, because if that is the case, then we can, you know, what do we need fifth grade for? I was very offended by that, and I would really like, I didn't get to participate in the audit committees, I haven't heard anything about an exit interview, or I would have asked that question there, and so I come here and ask, could we please, at least when you speak to them, Mr. DiVano, if you will, would you please ask them to explain that statement?
Well, let me address a couple things, I did talk to the individual, and I told you that I would talk to.
Oh, yes.
She was perfectly satisfied with what she received, and did not want me to pursue it any further.
That's a shame, because that's a personal, and that's very, I mean, that's that time person this person is.
I know, and then, the second thing, that you're, you're talking about, about the exit, there was no, really no exit audit.
No, there wasn't initially.
There wasn't, they just meant...
Will you be responding to the OPA on things that they may have, that we disagree?
No. What they did with the, with the principal of each school, they came in and told them what their report was, and then that report was going to be written up, and, and everything was going to go to the state board, we would not see anything until the state board approved it, which comes here.
Correct.
But we had ideas of where we stood before they went down there, because there was no things passed out, everything we had to do was had to write it ourselves, any information and stuff like that.
Well, I will say this, and I, and I'll say...
So really, there wasn't a formal...
A formal exit.
...exit audit.
Okay, I can appreciate that. But I will say this, until the day I walk out the door, I just cannot perceive, because when you have distinguished student leadership and distinguished teacher leadership, you have a distinguished principal. And do not stand alone, they're a team. And I think that should happen.
May I say something? I like to agree with Mrs. Hurley on this, I don't have that report, it's been a long time since I've read it, so I have to do a little bit of recalling here, I, I think there was one school involved in that audit, that the state lowered the rating for the principal.
Yeah.
There was one school that the state elevated the rating. So, it seems like it'd be good management to know why that happened, because it flies in the face, for the one school where it's lower, it flies in the face of common sense here, you look at the scores, and how that school's performing, what was the justification for lowering that school? To give the school and the principal an opportunity for improvement.
And there are some things that need to be addressed in there as well, I mean, with other schools, and I hate to bring out just one school, because I mean, you can say good things, or you can find something negative in any school, you know, no one's perfect, you know, we're always going to find something, someone's going to find something somewhere, you have an audit, it is to nip picket to death. They will find something, if they didn't find something, then you didn't pay for an audit, is my personal opinion.
And with kind of negativity, I don't think anybody in this board would ever see any negativity from our teachers.
No, no.
Personally, I look for opportunities for improvement, not opportunities...
Exactly, and I do feel that we need to look for an opportunity, particularly here, there was a statement that's in that audit that concerned me, that the students were not widely represented, that their voice was not widely represented. Now, what leads to that, I don't know, I think that needs to be evaluated, you know, and determined if there's really any credence to that statement, because some of the audit teams didn't even have teachers on them. And how the teachers aren't in there to audit our teachers, I don't know, but some of the audit teams did not have teachers on them, and I feel that the, OPA was remiss in that. So anyway, you know, congratulations, gang, I hope you all know I really mean that you're all the greatest, and I, who on this board thinks so also, but I would like to, I think you'd be an explanation for those ideas. I would like to, I think you give an explanation to those ideas, you know, yeah, great, appreciate it.
Ted, could you go another step with that, uh... Mr. Hurley?
Yeah, that's right.
One person sitting in the room here took the initiative to start the STAR program in the county.
That's right.
Mrs. Minnie.
That's right.
And when I read the material for Troy, if I recall correctly, and I may not, there was some indication that enough wasn't being done to evaluate student achievement. As far as I'm concerned, from what I've been told, Troy was a leak. So I'd like to know why the school was graded down like that.
Well, actually, they actually made a statement that I found odd there. I read this pretty thoroughly. You know, that's just the way I am when it comes to these things. And, uh... They made a statement there, and like I said now, I'm paraphrasing, that they felt they were looking at the STAR program results too frequently.
I'm really impressed.
I don't know. Some of these statements, I, I would just like to have them explained. And I really thought an exit interview would be in order, but apparently they're not going to bite us.
Okay, I'm sure that we're going to get an opportunity at a later date to get, uh... Into a lot of the details of, of this audit report. Uh... Tom Ratliff has been doing some academic improvements, and a new program that's just coming along. And Tom, would you like just to give us a, at this point, a, just a thumbnail sketch of what you were involved with?
Uh... Sure. I, uh... We were, what Carl said there a little ago about the English, and the reading, and math at Career Center. That exists in probably all of our schools to some extent. And, uh... When you get up to the college level, then it really becomes a problem with reading, math, and spelling. But, uh... You know, he brought up about the welding class. You could be an excellent welder and receive the highest marks in welding. But if you can't read specifications, and you can't read blueprints, you have a tough time getting some job that you might want. Anyway, I attended a meeting on, uh... January thirteenth. And, uh... We apparently received a grant. It's called the Litisri, Litisri Innovation and Rural Education. And what I can understand, uh... Just then, that's just a kickoff meeting, really. They were probably twenty or twenty-five people there. They was represented from business, churches, uh... Public library, four-H groups, and, uh... Gilmer County and Barber County, those are the two counties in West Virginia. I think the Navajo Indian Reservation got one, and one in Illinois. But anyway, it's going to take about four meetings to really get, uh... The thing off and running. But this is going to be a little different, and that this is going to be a community involved project. There are going to be teachers, there are going to be a lot of volunteers. And, and I think, uh... It will be a great thing. They're going to furnish books, they're going to furnish, uh... Materials for preschool children. And we got teachers in here, and they well know if a, if a child cannot read and read well by the third grade. Time eight makes the third grade, and they're going to struggle. And it's very difficult when that kid gets in high school, and then all of a sudden he has a reading problem. It's very difficult then to turn it around, so, uh... With that, I just want to let everybody know what's going on, on, you know, the people on the board. But this is going to be, I hope, a county-wide program. It'll be communities in the entire county, the kids will get books. We might have our parents involved with it to make sure the kids read the books. Otherwise, a book's no good if the book isn't read, you know? So, and hopefully, this will be another way that our, uh... Our kids will get additional training. It, I think it will help if it goes well, bring the county together, bring the communities together. It's going to be a multi-year thing, and, uh... So, uh... I'll try to keep you informed as we go along.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I, I don't know the detail, but who got the grant. But I think that is an exemplary thing to have done, and people, uh... Deserve the credit for it. And, uh... Mrs. Minnie, can you do something similar for math?
Well, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics need to come up with a good grant. Because that's who, that we received it through the National Council of Teachers of English, and we are very blessed that we received that. Only thirteen districts in the United States received that.
Absolutely.
So I can't tell you what a blessing that is, out of five states, or one of the two districts in our state federal shows.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Devano, we're back to the phone system.
I just gave you a report that, uh... Dr. Armor wanted to ask questions, and I answered them to the best of my ability, and my staff did the same thing. And you have it in front of you. Also, you have the award letter that you received, a hundred and seven, seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and some dollars for the HVAC down here, that they'll be starting in the next year and a half. That money comes through the SBA, and yes, there'll be competitive grants on that one. And the first question he asked about his question to the state on December eighth, at this time, not receiving any responses whatsoever. But the rest of it, the phone system, uh... That he asked, uh... I gave him the information on that. He wondered also what we have and the, uh... What the money costs to upgrade the, to the, uh... Services for the five schools, I gave him that. This was all done research by my staff, and we had to ask other people that retired from the Board of Education to come back to help us find this information.
You know, I got on the board's way, a lot of the things that happened after the fact, but... We heard a lot of discussion about the telephone system, and one of the impediments for it working was the claim about didn't have enough broadband. Did you, uh... I haven't seen, you haven't given me yet, uh... Answers my question, but you haven't...
All I know of broadband now has been upgraded by Palmeroy, or not Palmeroy, but Frontier. And we've not had problems since they upgraded it. And they did what they had to do with it. Frontier repaired it.
Wasn't this all relevant to the fact that they were considering getting an upgrade because there were so many problems not being able to get through the Board of Education when we first came aboard?
Frontier said they took care of all that. And even one, two of our schools had problems with it, and they're supposed to be taking care of all that.
And then the issue about the, uh... Megabits, uh... The college gets by with a hundred megabits, and most of our grade schools can do well with twenty-five megabits. But we're paying for a hundred megabits, I understand, each school. I'd just like to know what the difference in cost is, and when twenty-five would do, we're paying for a hundred.
But don't you have to have a hundred to have basic, and, uh... I don't know.
I don't have that.
Gilmer County's schools have, uh... If you look on their one page, it tells you all the megabits that they have. And from my understanding from Sterling Bean, when I talked to him, all of our schools are up and running, what they're supposed to be running on. And I guess that's when the state took over, they upgraded all that system.
Well, if we ever get true broadband, what are we going to do faster speed anyway? Would we really want, if we ever get the true deal, instead of DSN?
Okay, let's go to item eight, delegations. And I would remind those who are speaking as a delegation to limit your, uh... Time to three to five minutes, please. First, uh... Person is Phil Starkey.
May I inquire, I wish you were going to give me the three of the clock.
Whichever you want.
Well, I want all I can get, because I waited an hour just to, to even be here, and I'd like to have my say.
The rule is that if the majority of the board votes to extend the time, that the time can be extended, uh... Extended. So I would ask that we maybe let her talk fifteen minutes, if you...
Well, I don't want to talk that long, but I would like to have my say without having to worry about watching the stopwatch. Because it was five, and then...
Just be nice, Phyllis.
I'm always nice. When it comes to children, you don't find anybody any nicer. But what I would like to say is I thank you three for putting the delegation, trying to put the delegation back where the state board has it, where all fifty-five counties have it, where all commissions are having it, and I can't find anybody that doesn't have it. And I don't know why you all would even be asking the State Board of Education if you could put it on your agenda, because they gave that back to you. And I don't even know why they would have to even be asked. Because that's supposed to be your alls to do, not the state boards to do. They have finances, they have capital funds, that's all they have. They don't have the agenda. That's yours. I would like to talk to you about, uh... The two superintendents. Mr. Witter, that is in Calhoun County, and of course, Mr. Devano, he's in this county. Now, the reason I want to talk to you about the two superintendents is, is the school closings for snow. Now, down at the Career Center, and I'm very big on that Career Center, magnificently big on that Career Center. During the snow days last year, and this came straight from Mr. Probst, who was the former superintendent, Calhoun County called school off ten days. Gilmer County didn't. They didn't, well, just put it bluntly, and I, I am blunt, like my sister, that absolutely, that our little children that are four and five and six-year-olds standing out in zero sub-degree weather all last winter didn't make my day. And I'm sure it wouldn't make your alls either. But because they missed ten days, and Gilmer County High School didn't miss ten days, what happened there was that Gilmer County sent their students down to the Career Center. Career Center only has one set of teachers. They're only paid for the two hundred days. They're not paid for any more. So they took Calhoun students and didn't teach them for ten days. Those children lost, and they are our children, as Carl knows. When we're talking Career Center, we're saying, these children are our children, whether in Calhoun or where in Gilmer. They're our children. Those children missed ten days of school and could not make them up because of that. Now, what I'm asking, and I would like to have somebody to get back to me on these things that I carry on, as everybody else would. I want to know if the two superintendents would not at least speak to each other on cold mornings and snow mornings to make sure that we're not going to allow ten days of Calhoun children not being able to get to school or even get their skills. Because down there, skills are very important to these children. They have to get this school, skill training. It's not like at the high schools. And by the way, you're talking about reading and math. And because they don't know their reading and math, people, where do you think they come from? They come from grade school here, high school here, grade school down there, high school down there. They were supposed to be sent to that Career Center with reading and math in tow. I mean, if, they're not the teachers of the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth graders in reading and math. That's our beta web. Now, what I'm asking is the two superintendents to at least have some concern to call each other and say, "I'm not going to have school today." Because I'm telling you, when you call ten days off in Calhoun and come up here, and our fo- uh... Former superintendent, Mr. Blankett Schell, he didn't believe in calling any school off. Absolutely, he came, you know, every morning, but still, yet, we had school when we shouldn't have had school. But now, those children has no time to make up those ten days. Now, if you want them to be that one, and you want the two superintendents to say, "Oh, we're individuals. We're not together on this, this is, you know, Gilmer up here, Calhoun down there. We're not together." We are together, people. Those are our children, all of them. Everyone from Calhoun, everyone from Gilmer are our children. And we've got to look at them as our children. And these two superintendents must say to each other, "We're not going to have school today. All right? Fine. Then are you going to provide the money to pay the teachers to come back an extra ten days?" Calhoun's not, and we know why, don't we? Because they don't have the money. This has got to be some way that we can take care of this, so it does happen again. Mr. Probst was very upset last year because his kids lost ten days of school. And I said, "Sir, those are our children you're talking about, and we can't do that." So I would like to have somebody to say to me that they're going to do that. And the only way a superintendent know if he should have school or not is to get out, go up on Indian Fort a bad morning, and then come back and make his decision. I'll guarantee you, he won't be having school. There's no question about that. But we know some mornings that it may not snow in Calhoun and not up here, but I don't know whether it is, it does every day like that. But I was asking, Mr. Devano, because he's the new superintendent, to please talk to Mr. Witter and get that taken care of, so we don't have the loss of that many days of school, because you can't make them up. Now, it's different this year, and all of us know it is. This year, we've got to make up a hundred and eighty days regardless. You just can't do like we had in the past. We take a few days that we had for this, or a few days that we had that, and put them in there. Now, you've got to make it up. So we have to look at these days a little bit harder. But please, we need these at the Career Center. These kids need their skills. And they can't go in a foreign state and do all these state works and do all these things if they don't come to school. Somebody said, and I put this in last year, that if we had a typing, everybody had a computer, which they don't, especially not down at Calhoun, especially not in the Norman Town area, and some of the areas of Troy, and some of them up in the Indian Fort area in San Fork. These kids don't have computers, but they do try to call the student and tell them what to make up, if they can get them. But still, yet, that's over and above what the teachers have to do. And they're willing to do it, and they do do it. But we can't lose that time for that. Another thing also is the fact that we're talking about this audit. And it did, as I said, I read the audit too. And I did not like it because they said, "Fifth grade, we didn't need a fifth grade." That, to me, was asinine. And we have to answer that audit. Any things that's wrong in that audit, we have to tell the state how we're going to correct it. I don't know when we have to do it, because I haven't got an audit. But I guarantee you, you have to say how you're going to correct that. And I see no reason that our secretary of this board cannot write and ask them to please tell us an explanation of why we don't need a fifth grade in the state of West Virginia. But we need two at Glenville Elementary. And I know why there's two at Glenville Elementary, because there's no place to have fifth grade. So if you want your kid to have fifth grade, you go to Glenville Elementary, it's the only place to go. We don't have any other place to go. So we're going to get more and more and more at Glenville Elementary. But if you're going to divide the two classes at Glenville Elementary, and you have twenty-eight, we'll say, three extra, and you have five over that, we used to split the class and say seventeen in one and seventeen in another to classrooms. But we can only say twenty-eight. Those five can get in the sixth grade, like they do at Troy-San Fork in over at Norman Town, if that's the purpose that we're making. But I think that statement should never happen. The last thing I'd like to say is, I'm getting very worried about whether we're going to have enough money next year to support four schools. Now, notice I didn't say three. You have three elementaries, one high school, the other one's going to be leaving. And they're going to take how many students with them, we don't know. If they take a hundred students with them, over there, approximately a hundred, Mr. Probst told me himself last year that he lost fifty-three students. And out of that fifty-three students, they lost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from those fifty-three students. Double that, maybe we'll have to triple that. Then we're going to lose close to a million dollars. Can we afford that? Do we have the money left? I don't think we have any two thou- two million dollars left, like our board had over the years put there. I'd like also one other question answered for me. Well, there's two, actually. One, that close to a million dollars that we promised the SBA hasn't been paid to the SBA. Usually what they do, we have to spend our money before they spend their money. So I don't think of that, we still have a million dollars left if we've already paid them a million dollars that we're supposed to pay them. There's some way there, that's not, that's not the case. And the other thing is, when we asked the federal government to do that one million dollar bond that they gave us, that was on the Cedar Creek School, not on the Hay City School. Do we have to go back and change? Do we have to go back and change? I've looked every place in the S B A for a needs assessment for this new school. I can't find one. Is the S B A, have they finalized the new Hay City School or Gilmer County, which I think should be called Gilmer County Elementary? That have they already done that? It's not showing up in the state in their minutes. The state hasn't. One thing I think the state's done that I can see in minutes, and that's that they said they would, had a deed, they would accept the deed. It's my understanding, the deed's not through yet, that it hasn't been signed for that property up there. How many students are we going to have left? People, we're only going to have about seven hundred students left in this whole county. Can we afford it? Are we going to have money to do it? Your budget is coming up shortly. It's coming up shortly. Do you know if you, how many students going to be at the new school, or how many schools going, that are going to lend? Do you know how much money we're going to lose? Have we got something in the state formula back from Charleston saying how much we're going to have? So you can do a budget. We always had to have a budget done by March thirtieth and ready to go. Do you all know anything about that yet? These questions I'd like to have an answer to, and I hope that you would ask for the same answer yourselves. Thank you.
Okay, the next delegation, Kimberly Bond.
I just, as a follow-up to the last meeting, when I'd asked you all to sign off on our salary campaign resolution, and after speaking to a few people, I wanted you all to understand, and I wasn't very clear, that this is not anything new, this is what we had proposed last year, and you all agreed to, except you, Mrs. Willie, that you weren't on the board then.
Yeah, that's right.
So anyway, I thank you for considering it, and I'm going to take the letter and send it away for you.
I read it before I signed it, Mrs. Bond.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it, and I hope that this will help us.
That's all.
We're not supposed to ask questions, so I can't ask you if Forrest Bowman is working on this.
Forrest Bowman? I'm not familiar with that name. I didn't visit, I went to lobby at the Capitol yesterday, as did about a hundred other W B E A members, and I don't recall that name, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. I did have one other point is, if you want to have an executive session, it should be on the agenda, it should state why you're going in, not just there's the law to go in an executive session. But you should not make these people, who have worked all day, sit an hour waiting for you to know the executive session. Please rearrange and put it at the back of yours. That's what we did for years.
Okay, Sherri, what else?
What was your name, Sharon?
Sharon West, yes.
Sherri West.
Mr. Devano, Dr. Simmons, and members of the Board of Education, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening concerning the closing of Troy Elementary and the opening of Leading Creek Elementary. As faculty senate president, I was asked to speak representing our Troy teachers. We have met with Mr. Devano twice. He has received our questions and worked to find answers to those questions, and we thank you, Mr. Devano, for your continued support. Mrs. Bond, it serves on the advisory council for Leading Creek. She's been very professional in not sharing information about the new school unless we are in a full faculty meeting. She has deferred to Mr. Devano to share information with us. This evening as a staff, we just wanted to make him aware of some of the concerns we have. These concerns may be addressed through the advisory council's draft of legislation written by the state's attorney in Charleston, and these are what, these are the things we're concerned about. One, parent-student notifications about attendance policies due to school zones, bus transportation, et cetera. This information will determine how many students will attend Leading Creek, and student population is how the number of teacher positions offered will be determined. Number two, the hiring of teachers at Leading Creek. Interview process versus the promise guarantee that Troy teachers would have a job at Leading Creek. Three, maintaining Gilmer seniority, even if transferred or rift into another Lewis County school. And four, procedures for where we will go in Gilmer if we choose to not go to Leading Creek. Just last Wednesday, in my first grade classroom, a student that struggles with anxiety issues asked if I would be at the new school. And before I could respond, another student answered, she doesn't know, because nobody knows who will be at that new school. Our six and seven-year-old students are anxious about their future, and they understand that the new school situation seems to have more questions than answers. We're now into the second semester of our school year, testing season is approaching, and we, the staff at Troy Elementary, are very anxious about our future too. As our Board of Education, we wanted you to know our concerns, and we will continue to ask until we have more answers, even as we wait for legislation to be completed and advisory council decisions are made. We want to thank you for your time. Troy Elementary staff have always presented themselves professionally, following the chain of command with respect to questioning those in authority. Sometimes our lack of appearance at board meetings has given the appearance that all is well and we're not concerned. Therefore, we have come this evening simply to let you know that we are concerned, and we are continuing to wait for answers to our questions. But as we say at Troy, one family, one goal.
One family, one goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Dave Ramasaw.
Well, mine is very short. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Devano for sending us the agenda for publication, as he promised. And my other note is just my idea, my opinion about the delegation. I think if he's at the beginning, the time is more definite for the people who want to be here. You know, the meeting starts at six, somebody would say, okay, you know, by six-thirty, I'm done. Versus the way it is right now, you know, my wife asked me, what time you're going to be back? The time I told her is not the time. So it's not definite, so people cannot plan. And my last question is, you all went to executive session, which was not on the agenda, which usually, I mean, it should be on the agenda, even if you're not going to have it, you know, you say if needed. And, and also, you know, according to the rules, when we go to executive session, we're supposed to say what the reason is. The public got to know the reason for going to executive session. You don't have to explain it, like we're going for personnel, we're going to go, you know, no reason was given. Thank you.
All right, we're down to Item Eight, adjournment. Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Make the motion.
Do I hear a second? All right, we have a motion, a second, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Come back. Come back.
I'm having a bee's, blood pressure.
Blood pressure?
That was not very nice.
You're sad, Chris.
This baby doesn't have blood pressure?
I have blood pressure sometimes.
I don't have any tissue.